Time set for the strategic planning meeting. The agenda's been posted on board docs. Thank you all for joining. First, we have our roll call. And I'll take care of that. Dean Howard. And I don't see Dean on the call. I do understand that he may be joining us later. Lynn Davidson.
Here.
President Mark Sims.
Here.
President Mike Gordon.
I'm here.
Mike Manley.
I'm here.
All right, Mike. Sue Kay Kniefel.
Present.
Linda Bove.
Present.
And Shelley Herbald. I know that Shelley is not going to be able to attend today, so thank you for coming. The next item is the review of background information that's provided and emphasizing virtual norms. I think we'll run this similar to the way that we run a board meeting in terms of, you know, turn on your camera if you want to talk. I can recognize you and then you can talk. I'll be on mute. And when you're done, then you can revert back to me and I'll take the next person in line. And also speak slowly if you can and take some pauses if you are going to ask a question. So the interpreters have time to do their job and the people using the interpreters have time to process that information. So next, going into item three. Nancy, Nancy Alexander is our facilitator for this exercise. And will be for the next few work-study sessions. She has a few points to go over, kind of about, you know, what this process is. I know we wanted to start this a little bit earlier in the spring but got delayed due to COVID. But she's going to go over what kind of our timeline is, what the various milestones are going to be along the way. And then we can proceed from there. So Nancy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Nigro, and welcome, everyone. We do have with us three ASDB staff members, Superintendent Reichman, Assistant Superintendent Kristen Rex, and Executive Finance Director Shayna Cooper. And so they will be here as resources for us today. There are really five stages in the planning process. And what we're hoping to accomplish today will be planning the plan and starting to look at what's most important, the burning issues for each board member, so that then we can see what we need to do to get to additional data and information. We have scheduled October 1st as our second work session. If it goes as planned, then we will begin to set strategic priorities. And then we will need most likely two more sessions to develop the strategic actions and how we're going to communicate and market the strategic plan. The goal is to have this completed by the end of 2020 so that it can be adopted starting January 2021. So you have in your packet a virtual notebook. The plan last March, when we were going to meet, was to have this for you. And so the notebooks are sitting at PDSD. And if we ever meet again in person, we will distribute those for you so that you have everything located in one place. The items that you have in your board docs include the letter that we started, sent out to you after President Nigro and Superintendent Reichman and I met, that talked about the basic definitions of strategic planning, individual expectations, most important issues, and then developing that timeline. As we look at the board docs, you have a calendar that we would like to, under number four, complete with potential dates. You have the ACT operating principles that have been established now for three years. They stand for accountability, collaboration, and transparency. And that's how we want to operate within the agency. You have the profile that has a whole host of information from the 1920s, a school year. It will be updated this fall. Of course, your vision and mission. I also included the draft scope of work that was presented last November when you were talking about the possibility of finding a consultant to come in and assist you with the strategic planning. What was determined was that it would be done with Annette and President Nigro and all of the board members, and that we would have an internal facilitator, myself, that would help you along the way. I'm not a participant. I won't be offering any suggestions, but I will be the one that will assist you in coming up with a very viable live strategic plan. You have the work-study PowerPoint that Eddie did that had a lot of data in it about live births of deaf and hard-of-hearing students. You have a demographic PowerPoint that was presented to school boards a year ago of what was happening with this general student population throughout Arizona. You have now the revised calendar. So it's the revised one that we're going to be finishing up with today. You have your strategic priorities that we have been working with, with the steering committee. You have strategic planning definitions outlining the difference between long-range planning, which takes your existing conditions and extends that into the next five years versus strategic planning where you really look at where you want to be in five to seven years and then work backwards. And then a hybrid model promoted by Advanced Ed that really gets everyone into strategic thinking. And so it takes that vision, envisioning piece of strategic planning and models in a way we can become better strategic thinkers. And then you've got the planning norms that President Nigro went over. So that's really what we have in your board documents. So the first phase that we're going to work on today is planning the plan and the information gathering and strategies analysis. And we'll start with number four in identifying the expectations from the board for the strategic planning process. So this is the plan for the plan. And I'm going to have you do this alphabetically, this first activity. And it's going to be alphabetically with your first names. So coincidentally, Superintendent Reichman, Annette, you are first. So what do you see as your expectations for the strategic planning process?
Hello. Well, for being here this afternoon. Really, my expectation for this planning process is to develop a very clear vision of what ASDB will look like in the next five years, that if five years from now, we can take a look back and see where we are today. And then did we get to the vision that we had? So I want a vision that we all can agree on as to where we want to be five years from today. So that's my expectation.
Annette, I'm going to ask if you have any expectations in the process. So we believe we'll have five meetings. But do you have, will this be with the board and this team as you envision setting these priorities in the next five sessions?
Expectations of the process itself?
Meaning, I put on the agenda any stakeholder involvement, anything that is beyond the nine board members and the three executive team members that you have with you today?
One thing that we can do, depending on board member interest, is once we develop some possible planning, we review it with different stakeholders. Maybe have town hall meeting. They have to be done virtually to ask the communities, parents, the students, the teachers and staff, some of their ideas about what our strategic plan can look like.
Thank you. So the next person alphabetically is David Nigro.
Hi. You know, in terms of the, you know, the expectations I want, in terms of the process itself, I want to make sure that, you know, the board members bring, you know, all of their ideas here in the early parts of the process. And then we can sort out through, you know, or identify any data that we may need to make a better decision and kind of sort through what the plan may be. And that's kind of, you know, a process-type expectation. You know, in terms of the result, I, you know, we, I want to get beyond just saying we will improve the quality of our services, certainly. But we can improve them in a measurable or in a quantifiable way so that we know that we've, you know, the work that we've done has been able to better serve the students and the constituents that we serve.
Thank you. So data-driven, both in using data to determine your strategic priorities and data-driven so that every priority is measurable with matrices of criteria for success, is what I heard you say.
Yeah, I, yeah. You know, I went to an ASBA conference earlier in the year when you could still travel. It was back in February. And, you know, one of the, one of the idea, and the, most of the meeting was about strategic planning. And, you know, one of the ideas that other districts use is they have a color-coded strategic plan. So they may have five different areas, you know, five different areas where they're really trying to get somewhere. And all of their, all their board meetings, every item on the agenda is linked back to one of those colors. So we know that each one of these efforts is supporting, you know, one of those, you know, one of those agenda, or one of those items. And I like that idea, not because it looks nice and it's color-coded, but the idea that we're always being reminded at all of our board meetings that, you know, we're undertaking these efforts for, you know, for a reason, that there's a place where we're going and these actions are going to support that, even if that action may not immediately, you know, bear fruit in that meeting or within the time period for the next meeting. But over the time horizon of the strategic plan, we're moving towards that goal.
Thank you. The next person alphabetically is Dean Howard. Dean, are you with us? I will come back to him then. Alphabetically is Kristen Rex. Kristen, your expectations?
I think moving forward, expectations selected by the board gives me a clearer vision of where to go to get down in the weeds. So it would be awesome to have our items. I hope we include stakeholder input. I have been fielding a lot of questions from our stakeholders in our school districts. We have a lot of changes that we are implementing during, during this time and with our schools and our co-ops. And I have been fielding a lot of phone calls from our stakeholders, which are districts wanting to know, when did this decision happen? Why didn't we have any input? So when we have our marching orders and you give them to me to get down in the weeds, I need to want to focus on our stakeholder input as much as possible. I think that's probably what I'm hoping to bring out of this project.
Thank you, Kristen. Linda Bove, you are next. Your expectations as a board member?
First of all, before I begin, I'm looking at Jess's background. It's pretty light and it's really washing out her face and her hands, so I'm not able to see her. So I'm struggling right now to be able to understand her interpreting. And she's asking if there is another darker background. If so, can you use it? And interpreter can.
So go ahead and switch out her background and I'll take over for a few minutes. Well, as far as the vision goes, really, I'm out of the loop with all of this. I did try to access the board docs. I was having problems accessing them. For some reason, my account, I wasn't able to get into it. So I'm trying to read through all the information and keep up with you all as we're here. As a statewide agency, how can we establish one line of communication? So who leads that? And how can we come together and pull together not only the agency, but look at the cooperatives? And how can we raise the bar for student excellence and achievement? That's really what I want to see, not the status quo, you know, and people working in separate and isolation. I'd like to see us all working together to, as leaders, you know, to all achieve one goal of student excellency. I want students to be successful after they graduate from school. That's the goal.
Thank you, Linda.
Do you need more, Nancy?
Not yet, but in the next activity, we will. Thank you. The next person is Lynn Davidson.
I'd like a clear plan that we're moving forward and looking at the whole agency, including the co-ops, the early childhood with, you know, the goal, obviously, that our post-school outcomes look, look really good. But we have to look at it across the whole agency, not just the brick and mortar, not, not just the co-ops, but have a plan to promote better achievement with better post-school outcomes.
Thank you. Nice and concise and a very holistic approach. So the next person alphabetically is Dr. Sims. Mark?
Hi. My idea, what I think is, is you need to define your goal and then go towards it. So we should be the premier educational institution in the United States, providing excellent education for every child that needs our services within the boundaries of the state of Arizona and be a model for others to emulate.
Thank you. Nice and thorough there as a model. The next person is Michael Gordon.
My expectations. Trying to find up, bring up my video. There we go. Sorry about that. My expectations are a little long, Mark, is try to identify the issues or, I guess, what areas are particularly strong in our calling. I've always felt that we want to try to search efficiencies when it comes to cost-effectiveness of two center-based services, now remote services and obviously school-based services. How we can make that to be most effective, best practices, equal distribution of resources, how we can identify what those, those needs are and try to have honest conversations towards how we can design maybe a plan for the future that will really help, and at least in my case on this board, is help increase the awareness of blindness and how, how we can help the greatest number of people with our, with the amount of revenue we're allocated.
Thank you. Michael, that effectiveness and efficiencies is a little different focus. Appreciate that. The next person is Mike Manley. Mike?
Hi, this is Mike Manley. I don't want to reiterate some pieces that were already discussed. I agree. If you look at the mission and vision as it's stated, all children in Arizona, which encompasses our sub-pop's that this state institution is here to support. Our mission says all of those kids. So it seems that ASDB needs to be the, the true expert in the state for all of the LEAs in this, in this state to come as a resources and as a partner and making sure that those, all the decisions are putting those kids first. So ASDB doing everything it can for all the kids in the state, for all, all of the varying needs, be they co-op, brick and mortar, residential, not in one of those groups, but needing expertise in these areas. Are we doing everything we can to help those kids and families moving forward?
Thank you, Mike. I heard expert, as well as earlier premier, was two words describing the agency. Shayna Cooper is next.
All right, hello. My expectations would be after we've set our agency priorities is that we're able to continue to work toward common goals between agency leadership, the board, our operational, as well as our educational staff members, but also hoping to ensure that we align our resources with our strategic plan by tying the budget to the plan and that we're able to create a direct linkage between how our resources are allocated and how those efforts support our strategies. Over time, I envision that we would be able to identify those areas that contribute less directly to our strategic goals and that we're able to become clear on where we can work on gradually aligning our resources with everything that we find.
Thank you. And we know we have limited resources, so to maximize those efficiencies. And last but not least, Sue Kay?
So my expectation, I think, sort of pulls or piggybacks on several folks. I do agree with Mike that if we are true to our vision and mission, we need to make sure that we are demonstrating that expertise in our strategic plan to get us from where we are at to where we want to be. But I also agree with some of what David said as far as making sure that everything we do is tied back to those goals that we identify. I sit on another board and one of the things that we do with that information is also use it as part of the evaluation of the executive director of that board. So I think it, we need to carry it all the way through. There needs to be a thread that ties all of those pieces together with the outcome being improved student outcomes.
Thank you, Sue Kay. And that did pull it all together for us because we know for LEAs, the superintendents have performance criteria that was passed in legislation. So it brings it all the way around to the accountability piece. So with that being said, and what I heard in timeline is really over the course of the next five years. And so we are looking at 2026, if we follow the timeline, 2027, five or six years. So in order to start that process, Annette sent out an email. It was President Nigro's suggestion that what would be a headline you would like to see? And whether it be the Arizona Republic or the Wall Street Journal or something else that would be about ASDB five years from now. So in 2026, 2027, what might be that headline? You may not have had time to think about this, so you have the right to pass on this activity. I'm going to go alphabetically again, but I'm going with your last name. So the headline for five years from now, what would you like to see? I'm going to start with Linda. And remember, if you're not ready, you can pass.
I'm a pass, thanks.
The next person is Shayna. Shayna, what would you like to see that headline?
For me, again, I guess it would be along those lines of ASDB has identified resources that effectively ensure that we're meeting our priorities and educating our students, which is our, should be our main focus, to allocating the resources, being effective.
Thank you. And Lynn Davidson, do you have any ideas for our headlines?
It would be a really long headline, but that we would just pick up our, our deaf and blind students are achieving beyond what they've done in the past and are going on to bigger and better things. Haven't had much time to think about it, but that's my little thought.
Thank you. I wrote similar to that, that ASDB demonstrates greater achievement gains than general student population, was one idea that I had that is in line with the same like yours. And so the next person alphabetically is Michael Gordon. Michael?
That was all so much, so much fanfare there and I didn't even have myself unmuted. New North Country ASDB Residential Hub prospers.
Will you say that again for us, please?
New ASDB North Country Residential Hub prospers.
Thank you very much. And our next person alphabetically is Dean Howard. Dean, have you joined us? Then Sue Kay, you're up next.
Arizona State Senator Jane Doe credits ASDB with her excellence in education to get her where she's at today. credits ASDB with her excellence in education to get her where she's at today.
Wow. Great headline. Thank you. Mike Manley.
Arizona leads the nation in post-secondary outcomes for the deaf and blind.
Ambitious. David, your headline.
Well, I think first, you know, similar to Mike, we would say that, you know, the, let's say the ASDB schools, high school seniors earn X amount of dollars where X is a large number, you know, in potential scholar, college scholarships. But, you know, I think that my other, my real headline that I really want to see, it doesn't even have ASDB in it. It's, it has one of the students that we serve in some capacity doing something that's great that you wouldn't have expected. So and that's, that's really a, that's really my goal is to really enable the students to achieve things that they didn't think they could achieve.
Thank you. Annette, your headline. Annette, do you have your microphone on? Okay, we'll come back to Annette. Kristen, your headline.
Five years out, I would love Arizona State Schools for the deaf and blind to host a summit to support best practices with regard to instruction as well as curriculum development for other schools that serve students that are deaf, blind, hard of hearing or deafblind.
Thank you very much. And Mark, alphabetically, you're the last one.
Just a quick comment. When you walk into, I don't know if people are familiar with the school, but when you walk into Bronx Science, which is a magnet school in New York, it says on the wall, six Nobel laureates have graduated from this school. And those are the types of things we should be seeing on the walls of these schools. But the headline should be ASDB's peer institutions recognize it as the preeminent educational institution in the United States.
Thank you. Yes, that's powerful. So Annette, can you hear me? And did you have a headline?
Yes. Sorry about that. I'm having difficulty. Yes, my headline was similar to Mike Manley in that 100% of our graduates, both in the schools and in the co-ops, one year after graduation, they have a full-time job making a good wage and or they're in post-secondary education, again, towards getting a meaningful career.
Thank you very much. And so we can see that the agency's vision and mission is for all students that we serve. And we can see that we have agreement for that expertise, premier excellence, efficiency, those common themes. So I'm going to skip and start talking about what are burning issues for you. And then, once we've identified some of those, we'll determine then what additional information you need as well as obstacles that there might be. So I heard some underlying individual ideas for the most important issues for the agency. But I'd like you to take a couple of minutes and really think. We, we can't, if we do a few things very, very well, we will get momentum to be able to do even more. If we try to do so many things that we can't do them well, then the planning process loses some of its credibility. So this is going to be where David is going to go on the screen and you're going to raise your hand when you're ready to share. I will not be able to see you raising your hand, so he'll help me facilitate this part. But by raising your hand, please start and talk about what's most important for you to address as the agency. That burning issue that you really want to have possibly as a strategic priority to focus in on in the next five years.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. I am seeing Dr. Sims. Your camera is on, so Dr. Sims has the floor.
Yeah, you know, since I've joined the agency and one of the reasons I joined the board is, is the geographical disparity. I think we really have to work on delivering services across the state in a more even fashion. So people have access to it across the state. And that to me is one of our highest priorities.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sims. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments at this point? I see Linda. Linda, you're now recognized.
For me, what I feel is a priority is children having full access from birth up to language, primarily birth to five, having that full access to language. And ASL absolutely has to be a part of that and a part of that child's life from the beginning. That's an important issue that we need to focus on. And it really should be from the beginning. And that's it for now.
Thank you. I see Linda raising her hand again. No, okay. Sukey?
I agree with what Dr. Sims says in regards to the disparity based on location and geographics, but I, I also really would like us to sort of think outside of the box about how education can be delivered. And I think we've had some insight into that because of COVID. But I don't want us to have just an expanded box. I want us to be creative in our approach on how to best serve those kids. Not only wherever they are geographically, but wherever they are in their education journey to get them to the point where we do have those outcomes when they graduate.
Okay. Thank you. Are there others?
I saw Mike Manley's.
Oh, there's Mike. I see Mike. Mike, you're now recognized.
Only, um, I think a priority needs to be collaboration and partnership with the LEAs for which the, our agency is attempting to provide the best services to put these kids in the best situation long-term. So strengthening the collaboration between and partnerships, true partnerships between the LEAs and ASDB to better clarify what and how we're providing extremely important resources to these kids.
Linda? I see Linda.
Okay. So I've heard from about two or three already, and I do feel that those are important priorities. I have a question. As Mark and Mike Manley were speaking, talking about the geographic location of students. And for me, how are we monitoring those students? Who, who leads that? Because you have one monitor that says, that could say the student is doing fine, another monitor who may thinks that's different. So who's managing that process and collecting that data? So collecting that data and having it in our strategic plan. There's a lot of variables that happen across the state. And, you know, we do want to make sure that we're providing equal access, we're having equity. And I know that Dr. Sims really likes to look at that equity. And I agree. And I, I heard that a lot in our previous board meeting. Making sure that we have equity across the state, but who's responsible to monitor that? And is that the LEA's responsibility? Who's making sure that they're following IDEA? There's a lot of smaller issues that we have to work through within the larger issue before we can get to that priority. So is that eventually the big picture, you know, is, is that, but there's a lot of cleanup that has to be done to make sure that there is equity across the state. So what, what steps will be taken? So I do agree with the comments that were stated before me. However, I'm very interested in early childhood and language development. Okay. So I want to make sure that even we're having equity within each of the regions. Do they have access to language development? Who's monitoring that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Are there others? I see the dean has joined as well. Dean, we're sharing what we think priorities may be for the agency. And to go over the kind of the etiquette, just as in the board meetings, when you'd like to speak, you can turn on your video and then I keep the moderator, either me or Nancy will recognize you and then you can speak. I see Dr. Sims has his video on. So Dr. Sims, you have the floor.
Thanks. As a comment, you know, one of the things I think we struggle as a board is, is because we all have some semblance of subject matter expertise that we sometimes mix implementation with strategy. And so sometimes we talk about how we're going to implement the strategy, but it's really the strategy itself we need to formulate and then let the executives execute on that strategy. Cause I think sometimes we mix those two concepts. And so I'm not saying it's bad, but we need to focus on giving them the goal and then letting the executive of the agency obtain that goal, if that makes sense.
Great. Thank you. Are there others that like to speak about priorities? I don't see any right now. Nancy, would you like to move on to the next, next sub-point?
We certainly can. When we think about these priorities and in light of Dr. Sims' comments about strategies, that once you set your strategic priorities, the, Kristen described it as being in the weeds, but it's really, that's the direction that you give to the executive teams and with their support of all of their staffs, then they're the ones that will execute out the devil in the details with these strategies and then come back and share progress with the board. And so as we look at that, what would you say are some of the obstacles that you believe prevent the success of some of these strategic priorities? We know you have limited resources. So we heard Shayna talk about keeping those priorities so that the priorities are tied into the resource allocations. But what would be some of the other obstacles that you think that we run into?
Thank you, Nancy. Mark, I see, or Dr. Sims, I see that you've opened your video.
I would say one of our major obstacles is the mindset that our resources are limited as compared to perhaps not correctly allocated. And I think that's a pervasive mindset that we don't have enough resources as compared to where we allocate our resources. I'm not sure we don't have enough resources. I just think it might be how we allocate them.
Okay. Would you like to expand on that, Mark?
When you look at the resources, they're significant, right? And so the issue is not necessarily a lack of resources. It's that perhaps maybe the resources have not been expended on the rural student and those types of things. So, you know, obviously if we had unlimited resources, then that wouldn't be a problem. But there is a language where we automatically kind of say there isn't enough money. That's kind of a built-in language. When we have these board meetings, we talk about there not being enough money. I'm not sure that's really the case. I think the answer is, is yes, it's painful and sometimes difficult to reallocate the money. But I'm not sure the conclusion necessarily is we don't have enough money. Cause I mean, I think there's a substantial amount of money in this organization relative to our outcomes.
And Mark, maybe you can expand on the allocation. I understand that, you know, as you know, the funding comes from different sources. Can you talk about how you think it may not be deployed efficiently or effectively today?
Well, I think frankly, the money's been allocated historically. And so what I mean by that is, is there have been maybe without rationales that are consistent with what maybe we all see as our strategy. The money has gone into certain buckets in certain ways, and a lot of that has just happened through momentum, not necessarily without rationale. And so there is to some extent, maybe some resistance to change those allocations because they've historically always been that way. But it doesn't mean that they've always been that way and that's the right way for them to be. So, you know, there is, I mean, I don't know to what, what other granularity you're looking for, David. But that, that would be, I mean, if you look at it, there's never been a rationale for why our money's spent the way that it's just frankly, always been that way. And so the institutional memory that justified that would never pass on throughout the institution because basically anybody who had all of that institutional memory basically turned over around the time Mike Gordon and I joined the board. And so we've just kind of kept on doing what we did before. And I think that that was based on certain priorities that were brought to the table to the organization, but not a perhaps equitable and distributive priority.
And I guess I'm still confused by that, you know, and I'm very confused by that. You know, we know.
By my statement or that rationale?
By the, by the statement about how it's, it's, you know, the, the, the agency is funded through a variety of sources, as you know, and depending on the student that we're serving, we have different responsibilities with respect to that student. And we have different funds that are available to service that, to service that student.
I'll give you a perfect example. The trust fund that we have for the organization was actually funded by a visually impaired individual historically. But if you look, most of those funds have gone towards hearing impaired individuals disproportionately. So that's a microcosm of example.
So in the, the trust fund though, is there, and I know we get a very small amount of our funding from that. Is there a our funding from that, is there a, you know, is there a limitation on that trust fund?
No, there's not. But that doesn't justify the contradistinction of overly funding hearing impaired or visually impaired. I mean, it's been disproportionate in credit. It's always gone to the brick and mortar schools on the HI, not always, substantially gone to the brick and mortar schools on the HI side, historically.
In terms of that, maybe if you can, you know, expand on that, I know that we, you know, with students that we don't provide, that are not in the brick and mortar schools, the students that are served via the co-ops, we don't do all of the other things. We don't teach academics, we don't do transportation, we don't provide nutrition, we don't do all of those other things. So the amount that, you know, that we, that we spend is at the, at the behest or at the direction of the local school districts. And many of those relationships are fee for services, as you know.
That's true, but we do get a certain amount that's general fund money, correct?
That's right. We get about, I think it's 20 or 21 million from the general fund that we, that we have because we can't raise-
We can spend that across anywhere in the agency, correct?
That's right. Many of those, I mean, there may be some limitations, but in, in general-
Okay. So look at the distribution of that money, and I would posit it is not equitable across the agency, across the state.
Okay. And that's really, I think, what I wanted to know is that, you know, we, we have different relationships with students. We have certain responsibilities with respect to some groups of students and not to others, namely, you know, do we have to provide the academic education and transportation and nutrition to students from the co-ops? And the answer is no, we don't, you know, versus, versus the others.
But look at the discretionary travel. Discretionary travel has gone disproportionately to the, the students at the brick and mortar schools than it has for the co-ops. And there's no reason that they shouldn't be able to do discretionary travel as well that would benefit their, in cultural integration, educational integration, and all of those things. I'm not sure that that should be limited by a brick and mortar school.
You know, in terms of that, though, you're talking about going to see, traveling to have some sort of enrichment, is that right?
Yeah, whatever that would be.
Okay.
I mean, I think that that, that's a microcosm, that's a particular vignette or example of some of that, those issues. So if you're going to have equal opportunity, then you would want equal opportunity across the agency.
And I guess, so I think what you're saying is that the, the general fund's money, what you're saying is that the, the general fund's money needs to be said differently than it, than it is today, even though, is that what you're saying, Mark?
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is we have historically spent it for a cer, a certain way. That doesn't necess, and I'm not sure there is a historical justification that is consistent with the values and the mission of the organization. I think it is just a perpetuation of something that was established at a certain point in time in the organization before frankly, our current mission and vision was adopted. I can tell you that it does predate that. And so the reason we seemingly continue to do it is because that's how we have done it. I'm not telling you, I mean, it is possible, although I think personally unlikely, that we could go through this whole exercise and say, we are exactly spending the money exactly how it should have been, and weren't we amazing that we did that before we did the strategic plan? That's possible, but I think unlikely. I don't have the answer, I'm just challenging the allocation.
Mike, I think your video was, was open. Mike Manley?
Yes, this is Mike Manley. Sorry about the buttons on Zoom. Maybe to clarify, just thankfully for the agency, with a net harness of Ms. Cooper, we might be in a position where we can answer some of those historical questions about how and why those proportions are where they're at, which is a good thing. I don't know if previously, we were in a position to really take a look at data and answer those questions. But maybe we, maybe we could take a fresh set of eyes and, and take a look at how those proportions are actually panned out and consider, is that, is that part of where we're heading in the right direction? Without, you know, blaming the ghosts of the past, but having some clarity on the, where we are financially. I know that over the last two years, I have a much, much greater understanding of kind of the ins and outs of the fiscal aspect of the agency that really wasn't clear until the last, until Superintendent Reichman brought some transparency to that piece. So maybe those are some questions we could answer with data now that we didn't have access to in the past. I'm not saying that the proportions are, I just don't think we've had access to look at that until recent. I don't know if that is helpful at all, but having more information about where and how the money's coming in is a wonderful thing that we could leverage now.
Are there others that would like to speak about that, about the, the obstacles that we're, that we face? I see Ms. Cooper?
I just wanted to add just a few comments. As it, as we talk about our resources, I do agree with quite a bit of what Mr. Sims was talking about. And that's exactly why when the question was asked, what would be my expectation, was to talk about how the allocation of our resources are aligned with our strategic priorities. A lot of what we have done in the past has been based on historical, which I have tried to change in the last two years that I have been here. I have implemented processes where there is more involvement with the agency, from the various directors, executives, principals, the leadership team, in terms of that process is on them to develop what they're submitting and requesting as part of their budget submission package. So that has gotten a little bit more better, should I say, over the years in terms of how our resources are allocated and where we need to better identify those operational ineffectiveness, as well as trying to make sure that we're efficiently using those resources. Because yes, we do have $55, $56 million. Is that enough? I'm not sure. Again, I think the key point is that we're identifying what those priorities are, and I can better align what our budget should be. But I can definitely say that I am in very much in agreement with most of what he, he referenced when it talked about the historical and trying to justify how our budget was developed in the past, which I've been trying to uncover the last two years. And also, as it relates to the trust fund monies, we are only limited to 4% of our investment portfolio, which has been roughly about $143,000 a year. Now, there is a process, I believe Assistant Superintendent Rex can talk about that a little bit more, but there is a vetting process, there is a board, there is involvement from the various departments in terms of what they're looking for to increase those operational needs specifically for the students. Now, how that's allocated, again, there is a vetting process, but I definitely hope that is, that is one of my expectations to, to better align, similar to what Mark Sims said, our resources.
I think this is pretty consistent with when we were talking about expectation when it comes to operational effectiveness, efficiencies. This is a conversation I feel like we've had several times in the past, be it at strategic discussions or at board meetings, when it, it just comes to allocations and it is a, talk about historical perspectives and ghosts of the past, it's, you know, it's an institutional model that has, was established in Tucson over 100 years ago. And, and in some ways, we are still living within that construct of a residential facility with a very small census and a, a finite, albeit I feel, large budget, but with a, a big allocation to support that, that historical institutional model. And that seemingly, I'm interested to see that, that is, is emerging as an initial priority out of, out of some of the board members, because I do think that's an important aspect of how we're spending our money. Obviously, programmatic excellence is something that any institution should have as a ultimate ambition and goal, and that, that is, is clear, and I'd love to, to see us achieve that as soon as possible. Fiscal prudency and, and effectiveness, though, is something that doesn't just come through instruction, it comes through some tough decisions, and particularly nowadays, because we don't know where that budget will fall out in the next year or two, obviously not what we've been receiving just as a consistent year-by-year increase. That's it, Dave.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Does not, not look like it. Okay. So Nancy, if we can move on?
Okay. So now it comes to the hard part. This is the heavy lifting. So everyone's kind of talked as, some of their expectations, they've talked about some of the limitations. There's, I see bubbling up really four kind of focus areas that I have heard you talk about. One is resource allocation and having a, an obstacle, maybe is that institutional history and/or maybe not even having, until Shayna came, a really clear understanding of those allocations and then prioritizing as you look at those. I heard from one board member about zero to five in the early literacy. I heard from another board member about promoting partnerships. And then embedded through everyone's comments for these post-secondary outcomes or really focusing on student achievement so that those doors are open wherever they want to go once they've graduated from the schools. What you all have to decide next is what you want to have for additional data so that you can help fine tune these priorities or think about them and, and really get some consensus. And then, once you tell us what the data is and additional information that you need, we can bring that to the October 1st meeting. I don't know, President Nigro, if you've got a different read on that that you wanted to share with the group?
No, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think I did. You know, in terms of now, if we're, we're talking about what kind of specific types of data that we, that we're going to request from the agency, does anyone have any, any particular, I see Mike is raising his hand very quickly.
This is Mike. Was that my permission to go?
Yeah, that was it.
Sorry, thank you. I think a satisfaction survey from the LEAs we serve with some specific questions would be a good place to start. It's where we get our children that we're endeavoring to take care of. I think hearing from them, how we can better serve these kids would be a, a good place to start.
Okay. Dr. Sims?
Yeah, one of the things that's come up repetitively in the board meetings is the concept of, well, there are 49 other laboratories across the United States doing this. So it would be understanding what other states are doing, how they, I mean, we're not the only ones that have geographical diversity, you know, a diverse student population. I mean, clearly, this is something that I would think almost every state, except for maybe what Delaware and Rhode Island has to struggle with. So, you know, what are other states doing? Is there the data of every other state and what their programs and might look like? Because although we want to be innovative, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, because I suspect we could borrow ideas from multiple states and really come out with some very good solutions.
Are there any others? I mean, to, yeah, to me, you know, I think if we talk about resource allocation, you know, we, we, the majority of the agency's budget depends on, on enrollment. Again, there are those that attend the brick and mortar schools, those we serve in the co-ops. We get fee for service in many, in many cases, although not all. So those are, those depend on the number of students that we serve. We do get that kind of block from the general fund of about $20 million. Some of that we use in early childhood education and some other obligations that we have, some of that we use in the brick and mortar schools because we do provide all the other services, you know, the, the direct academic instruction, transportation, nursing, extracurricular activities, nutrition, et cetera. So we probably want, need to remind, you know, board members what, you know, where that goes and, and where that money is spent if we're going to talk about reallocating in some way, that we should talk about that. And we should also talk about, you know, some of the, the data, the, the amount of services we provide, both to the, the students in the brick and mortar schools and the students in the co-ops, because, you know, we, they have different needs, right? I mean, they have very different needs. And that's why it's called an IEP, because each, each child has, has an individual need and that plan is individualized. So, you know, there, there are some students that, that have less of a need than others. That's, that's kind of the nature of the, of the agency. So we should have a better idea of that. Mark, I see your camera is, is lit up.
Yeah, you know, I think we have to decide philosophically if this is an approach to deliver what we are obligated or need to deliver, or what we aspirationally want to deliver as an ideal. Because, you know, if this is, let's see what we statutorily have to deliver based on statute and IEP, well, this is can be relatively formulaic. And so I, I understand that that's recurrent language and philosophical framework to use, but I'm not sure that that's really an aspirational or necessarily consistent with what I would consider the ultimate strategy to make this a premier institution and deliver premier education. I mean, even if somebody's IEP doesn't say they need it, it doesn't mean you don't deliver it because it gets the child to where we ideally want them to be.
Okay. Dr. Sims, are you saying that we should supply, that we should provide academic instruction or nutrition or transportation to students in, in the co-ops who, who's, who that, that is currently being served by their LEAs?
I, you know, I mean, it depends if it's statutorily prohibited or not, and it also depends on whether or not that's in the child's best interest. I think you'd, you'd be hard pressed to go wrong if the institutional value, I mean, you know, I, I'd have to know the specifics, but I'm not sure that that's something that would be precluded necessarily if that, if that helped that child.
Okay. That's, that's very, that's very interesting. You know, the, the way that we, the way that the co-op serve is they're really one of several competitors to provide the services to, to support, you know, the, the child's needs. So it's not necessarily academics right now, or nutrition or transportation, or any of the other ancillary services, because they're, they're already served in their local school district, like any other school, student in that local school district. So, you know, to me, it, it seems that we want to improve our services so that we can be involved in, in more of the local school districts in the cooperative setting, as opposed to some other providers, right? There are many LEAs that hire their own TBIs and they hire their own O and M instructors and their own teachers to the deaf, et cetera. There are others that use other agencies, they're not, not this one, to provide those services. I think to me, we want to improve so that we can be more competitive with those other providers. But I'm not, I mean, certainly in the strategic planning world and anything, but I'm, I just don't see how it fits that we would, you know, send in, you know, social studies teachers, let's say, to supplement-
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure what the motivation is to, to use that particular example. I, I, I'm not sure what the motivation is to, to, to use that particular example. I mean, you know, the, the point of the matter is, is, i- if it's, if it's to provide what statutorily minimally required, or IEP minimally required, I think that's a different philosophical approach as compared to providing to get the best possible outcome. So if it doesn't say somebody needs perhaps a particular device to be able to interact educationally, but that's what's going to get them there, and the best, I would hope that maybe their teacher would appeal to the agency and we would provide it, despite the fact that we're not statutorily required. And I, I think that's a little bit different than a social studies teacher.
Well, you, you had mentioned, you know, providing academics or providing other, other services, and that's, that's the, you know, I, I think that's the, that's the disconnect that we're having. I'm not saying that we can't go beyond what, what the statute provides, or what an IEP provides, but what I'm saying is-
That tends to be the philosophical approach that we've had.
Right, but, but in that relationship, though, if we're talking about a student in the co-op, the, the, you know, that, that student is a student in that LEA, that LEA serves most of the, the child's educational needs, not all, they, they, they bring in us for, for certain specialty services, but they provide everything else, and, and they, they keep the, you know, a, a large part of the, of the voucher money to, to service that, and we get a part to, to provide those services. Now, can we provide, you know, what, what do we provide? I mean, certainly at a minimum, what the IEP has, and that should be what the child needs, but if there's something above and beyond that, I, I'm interested to see, hear your thoughts about what, what that could be, how we could identify it, and, and what would be beneficial to, to provide it.
I leave that to the experts, which are the teachers. I think it's a philosophical approach, not a specific statutory, being specific statutorily or regulatory about that, if that makes sense. It's the same reason why some teachers bring school supplies into the classroom, right? Because they know that the classrooms are better if they do that, rather than saying, well, we just don't have any money for it, we're not going to do it.
Are there any other comments? I see Linda, Linda's now recognized.
So I was watching the conversation between Mark and David, and I seemed to get a little more clarification, talking about, you know, providing additional services above and beyond the IEP. And of course, you know, we have to legally follow the IEP. So those additional services above and beyond, it has me thinking, you know, can we find those exemplary teachers? Get them to the school? How do we get those exemplary teachers to work, you know, whether it be on our brick and mortar schools or in the cooperatives? Do we need to pay them a higher salary in order to recruit them? Do we know how to get those exemplary teachers here in order to, to provide that additional service for the students? And as we all know, teachers don't get paid the best here in the state of Arizona, but a lot of teachers look at ASCB and they think, oh, Arizona, I'm not going to go there, you know, due to the pay. So is there more incentive that we can provide to attract those higher qualified teachers? So it's something that we should think about, and I think that's something that's important to me, is that we're, we're attracting those highly qualified exemplary teachers. So that's my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any other, I see Lynn?
Yes, I just want to go back to what Mike had to say, Mike Manley had to say about partnerships with the school districts. I think it's going to be critically important for us to really work on that, especially with our new, with the changes and the new agreement with the school districts. I think it's, that's something we're really going to have to take a look at. There's going to be a lot of implications, I believe.
Are there, are any other comments on that, on this section? Okay, Nancy, if you could bring us to the, the next order of business?
The next order of business is really to look at a timeline and future meetings. Sometimes in this process, things bubble to the top, such as a huge priority is to look at, in school districts, closing of schools because of declining enrollment. You know, I mean, there, there are things that are a little more specific than what you all have come up with. So I think as far as next steps, if we can agree on the October meeting and three more meetings, then David and Annette and myself can take this information and shape it into some ideas with additional data that we could provide for the October first meeting. Does that sound like a viable next step for everyone? And so we had tentatively planned, you see the revised calendar that were in your board docs, we had this work session on September tenth, you have your regular board meeting. You are all invited to the steering committee, if you remember on, that's on September twenty-third. That particular session, that, that group that meets are really the fifty key leaders in the agency, and so we could think of ways that we might want to share and gather some ideas from them. That you had a work session at one time planned for September twenty-fourth. Letitia put that in the calendar, I did not have that, so we could have a September twenty-fourth, we could have an October first, then a November date, and then a December date, and that's in the chart that she gave us. We can just pick some Thursdays from four to six, if you would like, and then, or I can have Letitia go out and do it, the way she asks, what times do you have available?
Yeah, Nancy, this is David, the, the doodle poll is probably the best way to schedule that, and then at the next board meeting, we can approve those dates. I know we have the next one calendared, so we're, we're set with that, but if Letitia can do some, a doodle poll for everyone, that'll be able to settle those dates, and then we can confirm at, at the next board meeting.
And David, I will follow up with Letitia and get that organized with her.
All right, great.
So, once we have those dates, it's, it's not, we're all focused right now, this process gets, it's messy, because it's really thinking differently, it's not the extension of the past, you know, it's not to say that we want to do this, this, and this for what our existing way of doing business, but instead, we want to really change how, I heard thinking out of the box, philosophical differences, some of those types of things. So you're just going to need to have continued discussions as everybody processes what we talked about today, to try to get into a narrow focus for those strategic priorities. There's not a hurry to do that. If it takes more than a couple of meetings, that's okay, because really, when you get down to then operationalizing these priorities that you've set as a board, that's the work of the leadership and individual staff members to present to you how they hope to accomplish what you set out as strategic priorities.
Okay.
So a doodle poll will be coming out, we'll have you approve that at the September tenth meeting. We'll, we confirm the September twenty-fourth meeting of, that was already in the makings, the October first one, we'll confirm those and make sure we have good representation, and then we'll have two more dates. And then you and Annette and I, David, will meet at the beginning of next week, we'll schedule a time. And so as all of you are thinking about things, you can certainly send an email to me, and I can be the rece, the receiving end of those different ideas, if you would like me to. I'm on, on the ASDB email, and I will just gather that and then put it into a form that could be shared with everybody, if you've, because we've talked about a lot of things tonight, and people need time to process what they've heard. So David, do you need anything else from the group right now? If, what I'd like to do is just have closing comments and go around alphabetically again, if there are any closing comments, and you, of course, can just pass. So I would start with Annette, do you have any closing comments, Annette?
Yes, just wanted to let you know that I listened to you, I heard you, there were a lot of really thoughtful, serious discussion here, really appreciate your time, your consideration, your thinking outside of the box here. I look forward to coming back in September and taking it to the next step and really establishing or re-establishing the priorities for the agency. So thank you for your time this afternoon, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Annette. David, did you have any closing comments?
No, thank you, everyone, for your, your time and, and your thoughts, and, you know, we look forward to the, to the next meeting.
Dean Howard, closing comments?
None for me, but thank you.
Kristen Rex, closing comments?
I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight. And as a board member, I'd really like to know each of your thoughts are, what your philosophies are, and learn those, and understand that we need to work together as a team, rather as a group of individuals. So I am definitely seeing and understanding each of you better. During our board meetings, we have so many duties and priorities to talk about, so this session really gave me an opportunity and a valuable understanding into each of you, and it was been a really great time just to see all these different viewpoints, and nice that we could bring them to the table, so thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Lynn Davidson, closing comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Sims, closing comments?
I've said enough, thank you.
Michael Gordon, closing comments?
No, I'm good too, thank you.
Mike Manley, closing comments?
This is Mike, thanks, thanks, just really quickly, I think it's critical that we do look five years into the future, but we're, we're a governing board in Quorum right now, correct? I could make a request. You know, we are certainly in unprecedented times right now. If it's possible, could we get an update at our next board meeting about how we've mitigated the stay-at-home order as an agency, and how we're helping our kids out? Just to get an update, I know we took a look at the opening video at the last board meeting, I'm just wondering if we could get an update on how, how that is going as an agency and, and how we've, what we've done and how we've assisted folks in, in, in the interim, until those metrics get back into a place where we can move forward.
Great, and, and that, and Kristen will follow up on that, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing comments, Shayna?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
And lastly, Sukey, any closing comments?
I just appreciated the dialogue today, and just wanted to say thanks for that, and thank you, Nancy, for facilitating, I think it made for a good discussion.
Thank you very much, Sukey, it's the beginning of many. We'll take all of this information and help narrow a little bit of the focus, but there'll be discussions when there's philosophical beliefs that need to be really sorted out, you may need to relook at your vision and mission, there's a few options that you might want to consider. So we will get that planned, so people feel it's, like it's a good use of their time at the next planning session. I want to thank all of you for your participation, and look forward to continue working with you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And President Nigro, do you need a motion to adjourn?
You know, I don't think we need one, but for the good of the order, I suppose we should have one.
This is Sukey, I, I move that we adjourn.
This is Lynn, I second.
All in favor?
You beat me, Sukey.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing all thumbs up from Lynn and from Dr. Sims and Linda and Sukey and Mike Manley, and all opposed? I don't see any opposed, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night, everyone.